Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council's legislative agenda. I first like to thank Councilmember Dillon for filling in for me last week as I was in Kansas City on business, but I did have good barbecue, just want to share that with you all. Our land acknowledgement, we acknowledge we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Farnsworth, if you call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We have one public testimony for the consent agenda this evening. That's Derek Azaro.
Council President, while he's coming down, can we take number three separately?
Yes. Councilmember Cathcart, I think number three was a duplicate we discussed at the agenda setting on the consent agenda.
Well, I think the duplicate was crossed out on the backside here. Number six. Yeah.
Go ahead, Derek. Thank you.
Derek Azaro, supporting all the children of Spokane. This is on the mayor's budget. I looked over it today, and this is for the week, by the way. You've got five checks going to the Hispanic Business Association nonprofit organization for a total of $140,000. Catholic Charities, $99,000. Goodwill, $386,000. Salvation Army, $41,000. Empire Health, $748,000. But then I see Carl Maxi allows you $6,143. And everybody in Spokane is welcome. All of a sudden, we're seeing all this money going to Hispanic Business Association. I don't see you supporting Carl Maxi. I think that's really not fair at all. As long as they've been around, as much as they do for the community and their community, I think they deserve a lot more money than that from the mayor. Prioritizing money to Catholic charities and Empire Health, Salvation Army that failed at their helping the city out, I think you need to take a real strong look at giving Carl Maxi more money. They deserve it. They've worked hard in that neighborhood, and I think they should have as much as anybody else has got. I mean, I like Mexican food as much as anybody else, but if you're turning down soulful, you're a fool. It's pretty good. So anyway, that's on that side, but yeah, more money to them, definitely more money to them. Make it fair.
Thank you, Derek.
And Council President, I'd like to take number seven as well separately.
We are going to start then with number three because we are taking them separately. Ms. Farnsworth, I'm going to have you just read number three on the consent agenda, please.
Acceptance of fiscal year 2024 program awards from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and approval to enter into subrecipient agreements with the awarded grantees, $6,885,650.
Any Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just really quickly, predominantly the reason I asked to set this aside and do plan to vote against it tonight is I just have a lot of questions as to the interaction that this has with the recent executive order. These are HUD dollars, and that executive order very specifically affects HUD, and so I would rather take a couple extra weeks and allow our legal counsel to take a look, give us their analysis and any recommendations before we take this on. But it's on our agenda, did not get deferred, and so I'll be voting against it tonight.
Any other council commentary? All right, on item number three, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
That's four ayes and two noes. That passes. Number seven, Ms. Farnsworth.
Interagency agreement with the Housing Division Homelessness Assistance Unit to accept Consolidated Homeless Grant Award for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027,
Councilmember Bingle, you want to speak to that? All those in favor of number seven, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
That passes four to two. Thank you. Now, on the rest of the consent agenda for this evening, any other council commentary? All those in favor of the consent agenda as it stands, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? That passes six zero. Thank you. Go ahead.
Ordinance C-36725 amending ordinance number C-36626 entitled in part an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to accept the Commerce Climate Planning Phase II grant and declaring an emergency.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. That passes six zero. Thank you.
Ordinance C-36728 amending ordinance number C-36626 entitled in part an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to accept the Administrative Office for the Court Therapeutic Court Grant and declaring an emergency.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That's six zero.
Resolution 2025-0053, appointing an individual to fill the position of Spokane City Council, District 2, vacated by Lily Navarrete.
Thank you. There is one public comment. Derek Azaro, you have two minutes.
Derek Azaro, supporting the children of Spokane. Speaking out in opposition to this appointment, appointing yet another nonprofit organization member to the board, or the council, excuse me, there's going to be times when there's going to be voting on budgets and finance from her voting on that, and I feel that if there's anything in any of those where CHAZ benefits financially from the vote, to me, it's a conflict of interest. You had other people that were interviewed, they were just as good as candidates, but you're adding yet another nonprofit person to the council. You've got upcoming elections, same thing, you've got council members trying to add on people that used to work for them, and more nonprofits. So you're just trying to fill the council with nonprofit organizations that are going to be supporting their own agendas. So speaking out against that, yes, I don't agree with her being on there for that reason. You've got Klitschke's a nonprofit, Dillon's been passed nonprofit, Wilkerson, she has her nonprofit. You just keep filling more and more people on here with nonprofits, which to me, it doesn't give the opportunity for just the general public taxpayers to have really a voice, not when you have nonprofits that are getting, as I just read, just read to you, $140,000, $748,000. All this money is being voted during the consent agenda for the mayor's budget. If it's for nonprofits, I think all of those should be separated out of that because the budget itself is for running the city, not supporting nonprofits. So the public has no opportunity to make any voice toward the nonprofits getting money because it's automatically included in the consent agenda to support the city finances and all the expenditures. So you're trying to fill this whole council with nonprofits that's not representing the voters of any town, not just this town, but anywhere when you do that. They have to stand on their own, they don't have any accountability, they don't want to answer questions, they don't want to even let you come in and investigate their bill, anything, most of the time. So I think it's really a bad choice to keep adding nonprofit, either exnonprofit people or current nonprofit people on the council. It's just there's too many, just going forward until November, you're going to have a lot of votes on finance and money, and they're going to be voting on that. Navarrete just voted on some money, and now she works for the city. And you've got the nonprofits that are bouncing back and forth, they're with a nonprofit, then they come to work for the city, then they go back to a nonprofit again. There's back and forth and back and forth nonprofits. You've got Catholic charities, people doing the same thing. You've got CHS, you've got one of your main people running with the city, he used to work for Catholic charities. And supposedly, the Ethics Committee cleared her, but the Ethics Committee is appointed by the mayor. So it's, you're tying too many things together, too many secret things going on.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Your time is up. Any other council commentary? I will make a point of clarification that once I came on city council, when I was first appointed, I stepped off all of my nonprofit boards. I have not served in any nonprofit capacity, and I absolutely represent a small business owner, which is what I do when I'm not sitting up here on the dais. Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank everyone who applied and went through this process. We had some really great interviews. We did this a little bit differently in terms of how we had a committee hearing on an appointee. We took public testimony there. I think there's still some ways that we can fine tune this process to do more public outreach, but I was happy with the road that got us here. I think all the finalists did have some, either they worked at nonprofits or had some consulting or some interfacing with nonprofits, every one of the finalists. And I do, I don't want to speak on behalf of my colleagues, but I do appreciate them also bringing forth past council member Ulrich. Again, he's amazing, very, very thoughtful individual. You know, I think we wanted to, myself and Council President Wilkerson, look at providing this as a new opportunity, public services, just such a high calling, and I think that Shelby Landen did a fantastic job in her responses and thoughtfulness, and look forward to serving with her over these next four months, particularly as we have to address a lot of budget challenges, but look forward to working with you, and congratulations.
Any other council commentary? Councilman Klitschke.
I guess I also want to respond to the nonprofit commentary. Every person we interviewed was associated with nonprofits. It's very similar to the kind of public service of working in governments. Nonprofits have budgets and business accountability, just like everyone else, but I'll also clarify, I was a Pilates teacher and a small business owner when I ran for office, not working for a nonprofit. But I do want to say, like, that's a good thing about people. We don't want you to not apply because you're associated with nonprofits. It kind of shows that you have an interest in giving back into the community, and every single person who did apply had some kind of will to give back to the community. All of the folks that we interviewed were great, and I really appreciate them coming forward and being willing to serve. That's a big deal, and we appreciate everyone who applied.
Any other council commentary? I also am excited to have Shelby join the council, but we did do something different. We allowed public testimony, and we had never done that before, to hear the voice of the community. We had a couple of people who came down and spoke, so the opportunity was there. Is it perfect? No. I've meeting with some people who had applied for coffee in the coming days to help them understand the process more, but I do applaud them for wanting to serve, and this is a community service position. We work on behalf of everybody to help make this a better city. That being said, prepare to vote. That's four to two. That passes.
Resolution 2025-0054, approving settlement reached by Safety National Insurance, the city's excess insurance carrier, with the estate of Robert Bradley in the amount of The city of Spokane will pay the balance of its self-insured retention in the amount of $222,123.21. Safety National will pay the entire settlement amount in exchange for a release of all claims and a dismissal of the pending lawsuit.
We have several public comments. We have Anwar Peace, Jim Leahy, Dennis Flynn.
My name is Anwar Peace, City Spokane Human Rights Commissioner. I am also a member of the Washington Coalition for Police Accountability, and I am a 25-year police accountability expert. I fully support the Bradley settlement. I will say that this settlement should probably have happened when the city did the last multimillion-dollar settlement with the Novak situation. Robert Bradley was killed two weeks before the city settled $4 million with the family of David Novak, and the same lawyers that are representing the Novak family are also representing the Bradley family. The same law firm is representing four other families that have been impacted by police violence. I will also note that one officer has been involved in these past two settlements, that's Officer Chris Johnson. He was also involved in a shooting last year. So my question for the city is, every time one of these suits comes up, is the city willing to pay $4 million? Because the same flawed police training that got us to this point where the city is having to settle these cases because the insurance company is demanding that, we're going to have to have some accountability take place. Officer Chris Johnson is one of 15 officers that have multiple shootings underneath them during their career. Since 1995, 75 people in Spokane have been killed at the hands of law enforcement, which means for the past 30 years, on average, 2.5 community members get killed by police. That correlates to 2.5 families every year in Spokane dealing with the tragic grief of their loved one being killed by police, which then that family becomes an impacted family. As some of you might know, the Human Rights Commission is hosting a courageous conversation next, this Wednesday on the 30th. I invite all of you that are feeling a certain way about these settlements and about these use of force to please attend this courageous conversation on reimagining public safety in our community. It's about bridging the divide and understanding the human costs on both sides of the badge on use of force and use of force fatalities in our community. The police chief and three impacted families are going to be a part of that. It's going to be at the downtown library July 30th, 5:30. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Jim? And then Dennis Flynn, who might be online.
My name's Jim Leedy. I'm the Executive Director of Citizen 926 and also a representative of Washington Coalition for Police Accountability. I support the settlement for $3.7 million for Robert Bradley's family. The money's not nearly enough. We need accountability. We need justice. They are not getting justice. The police officers that killed Robert Bradley were Chris Johnson and Trevor Walker. Officer Johnson has multiple shootings under his belt. It's frightening. I don't want him coming to my house if I need help because I'm afraid he'd kill me because he likes to shoot people. Multiple shootings, it's got to be looked at. Robert Bradley was ambushed. Bradley never had a chance to comply, much less know who was yelling at him. Officer Johnson was allowed to search Bradley's van right after he killed Bradley. There was other officers around that could have done it, but they allowed Officer Johnson to go and search the van. The first time a gun is ever mentioned is from Johnson after he killed Bradley. That is when he is searching Bradley's van. He sees a shotgun leaning up against the interior wall of the van, which could not be seen from the front of the van. Johnson says, "I knew I saw that explosive gun." He said it as if he was trying to say it to the camera. People made a big deal out of an alleged bullet that went down the barrel of Bradley's holstered sidearm. The police made it seem like Bradley was pointing the handgun at Walker and Johnson. The problem is that the gun is never seen in any of the body cam videos, and neither officer mentions the gun until Bradley is gunned down. Bradley would have been one hell of a quick draw to get a gun out and out of the holster and leveled at either officer. There just wasn't that much time. There is evidence that the gun was allegedly, that was allegedly shot by Walker and Johnson, was still in the holster as the holster had bullet damage. It was, looks like the gun was shot out of the holster by one of the officers while Bradley was laying on the ground. Bradley had not committed any crime. That's the problem here. We have people being gunned down in Spokane by police officers that are people that have not committed any crime. Either, any of you, this could happen to any of you, because if you don't commit a crime, but a police officer shows up and doesn't follow his training, doesn't slow down, know what he's doing, what is he walking into? You might spook him, and he might gun you down or someone you love. We need accountability. We have too many police officers that are pulling their guns out and shooting people. When I talk to retired police officers, one of the things they say is pulling your gun out is rare. Shooting somebody is even rarer, except in Spokane. We have multiple officers that shoot multiple people, and we leave them on the force, and we don't do anything about it. We need accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dennis Flynn and Dennis Megra Flatman.
Dennis, go ahead and press star six to unmute. Are you unmuted? Dennis, please press star three, raise your hand. Go ahead, Dennis. You're unmuted.
Dennis, I'm going to take, okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Dennis. We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Hopefully, I'm coming through okay now. About the settlement for Robert Bradley, I agree with the previous comment about the crime not being committed, and the body cam footage, I mean, sure leaves me wanting more context to understand if the initial contact tactics used, well, what those contact tactics used and the context they were used in, and before I come to an educated opinion on the shooting. But regarding the no crime being committed, there almost is a crime, though it's not officially a crime, and that is an allegation by a neighbor on a Tuesday resulted in Judge Mauer issuing a TPO and ordering a firearm surrender one and a half days later without even one ounce of due process in an evidentiary hearing. Judge Mauer should be suffering with sleepless nights for taking away of citizen second amendment rights without even a hearing, which resulted in officers approaching in the dark after the neighbor called saying that Bradley came home from camping with their guns raised and a tragic death. Even in this leftist state, we should expect our judges to default to protecting our constitutional rights, both federal and Washington State Constitution, and not default to abridging them. Justified use of deadly force or not, Judge Mauer's immediate issuance of a questionable firearm surrender order directly resulted in the tragic death. I hope the judge is very distressed and questioning if jumping to a surrender order was the right course in lieu of this tragedy. And that death being the most tragic result, our tax dollars going out the door because of Judge Mauer's rash jump to a surrender order is a permanent stain on her record. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Megra?
Megra, if you're online, please press star three to raise your hand. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I approve this settlement. It should definitely go through. Police state violence ripped the family apart, and Spokane has a history of dragging out settlements, and all that does is make the family stuck in this limbo. It doesn't allow them to move on, and it just costs taxpayers a hell of a lot more because we do, we end up settling because the facts of the case are unconscionable. This is a pattern. This is not out of the norm at all. The Spokane police have been nationally ranked in the topmost violent and lethal police forces in the entire country consistently for the past decade. I don't think we've dropped out of the 10th most lethal per capita city in that entire decade, and right now, we're sitting at like third. This is par for the course for Spokane. They did not attempt a dialogue with Robert Bradley. They did not attempt to deescalate when swarming him. They continued this violent recklessness, and this doesn't fix the hole left in our community. State violence took away someone. Robert Bradley should still be here with his family, fathering his children, and he's not because of a cultivated and continued violent culture perpetrated by Spokane's law enforcement. They're all complicit. In June 2020, Spokane Sheriff's Department paid Dave Grossman and Dave Smith to speak to all officers about Killology. This encourages police to kill. They said it would lead to the best sex of your life. This is incredibly messed up. This was scheduled, this Killology encouragement to kill was scheduled in reaction to protests about George Floyd's death in June 2020. Robert Bradley deserved better, and so do all the future people who Spokane police will kill because we continue to not hold them accountable. We just heard Chris Johnson is still on the force. He's not changing anything. We're not changing anything. He will continue to kill people. Police do not lose their jobs for shooting. STD is not held financially liable. Police don't have any accountability. City council continues to fund whatever they ask for. This isn't okay.
Thank you, Megra. Your time is up.
We absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That's four to two.
Resolution 2025-0052, setting forth the city council's budget priorities pursuant to section 07.14.030 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Thank you. One public testimony, Derek Azaro. Priorities.
Derek Azaro, supporting the children of Spokane. Budget priorities, like to see you add back in, or at least definitely include in going forward, making sure the COPS group is financed all the way for the whole year. You took away Prop 1, protecting the children of Spokane. You want to put shelters 1,000 feet of a school, although that's in the zone of safe streets for students. The shelters are not really under any oversight from the city as far as accountability. And the most important thing is, you can check the sheriff's website. There's 62 outstanding warrants for Level 1, 2, and 3 sex offenders running around in your city. 62 outstanding warrants. These are the people who are going to be in those neighborhoods, in the shelters, unaccounted for. And right now, you don't know where any of them are. They failed to register. And if you check any map of any city, you're going to see that sex offenders usually locate near schools. I agree, they are registered, you know where they are, but if you look at the PIN maps, they congregate around the schools. You've got them downtown. You've got them near Gonzaga University. They're protected by laws, as we all know, so you can't really say too much to them. But just remember that number, 62 outstanding warrants for sex offenders running around your city, and you shot down Prop 1 and refused to even go anywhere near that again. So now, you're going to have these shelters, you're shoving down the throats of the taxpayers in the neighborhoods, no accountability. I suggest you go back and you look at the video from Camp Hope of the neighbors around there that came to your meeting and testified. One woman said she had to sell her house, and she lost $70,000 in the sale of her house because Camp Hope was next door. And there are many others saying the same thing. You're expanding over in West Hills, putting in expanded shelter over there, so that a possibility. The people in West Hills, other property values are going to dump, and that's going to be all over the city. So I'm hoping the priority you have is making sure the COPS program gets funded, but as you noticed, the COPS program went away right before you started doing the scattered shelter sites. So if you start connecting A, B, C, D theoretically, not saying that's actually what happened, but it's kind of a coincidence that all of a sudden COPs out of how many years they've been around, all of a sudden, no funding out of nowhere, and they're fighting to get what they got right now. So as far as your priorities go in the budget, I feel strongly that the COPS program should be fully, completely funded.
Thank you, Derek. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Any council commentary on priorities? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. And I think it's a little bit, just because of the mid-biennial update that we're... This is in reference to, that it's a little bit broader, kind of looking at a variety of topics that we see might need some extra attention and focus, and maybe not so much on, you know, this particular program or this particular thing that we want to see funded or not funded, et cetera. So kind of inclusive. I'm sure there's tweaks any of us would have made to it if we were doing it on our own. But I do want to thank Councilmember Dillon for supporting the inclusion of this in our budget process, which was passed a few months back. That's kind of the origination of this concept of the resolution, doing it this way. And then also just his support, jumping on it and getting this going when we realized that time was of the essence. Definitely appreciate his input and that of Councilmember Zepone for the amendments that he made in the last couple of weeks as well, which I think were good contributions. So look forward to supporting this, and hopefully, the discussions and the overall process and what we get out of it yield some positive results.
Thank you, Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. And a lot of the... What ended up outlined here, I think, was concise. I mean, we kept it, even though it was broad, we did keep it. It's not a letter to Santa. It's not a wish list. It is things that I think we can wrap our arms around as we're getting ready to negotiate this upcoming budget. Some of the priorities also in the amendments reflect some of the changes that we've had. For instance, Shrek, as well as looking at adaptive design, traffic calming. But yeah, this is a good follow-up. We did want to get this done expediently before heading to council break, and really do also appreciate the additional transparency that this adds, that council is putting the administration on, I think, notice of what we want to prioritize, what we want to see, and this is a new and welcome process.
Great. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 6-0.
Resolution 2025-0051, relating to procurement of services and goods by the city to develop an inclusive, data-driven, and transparent process to improve participation by qualified small minority women veteran-owned businesses.
Thank you. There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 6-0.
Resolution 2025-0058, requesting the mayor and park board establish a pilot program for reforestation of the downtown Spokane area.
There is two public comments, Ray Lynn Barton and Clayton McFarland. Welcome.
Good evening. Ray Lynn Barton with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. I am here to express DSP's support of this resolution and Spokane's commitment to reforestation and urban canopy expansion, particularly in the downtown core. We recognize the city's goal of achieving 30% canopy coverage by 2030 and applaud the efforts to create and maintain active reforestation programs. Healthy street trees are vital to the economic, social, and environmental well-being of our city. They enhance property values, boost retail activity, mitigate stormwater runoff, reduce energy costs, improve air and water quality, even contribute to lower crime rates. The DSP is ready to partner with the city, the park board, and urban forestry to implement this initiative. We support enhancing outreach and engagement resources for downtown property owners, tenants, and residents. Additionally, providing no-cost technical services from the urban forestry department reduces barriers to tree planting while establishing a central point of contact to guide property owners. Through city processes related to public infrastructure will be instrumental in increasing our canopy. Together, we can revitalize the downtown canopy and ensure a greener, healthier, and more vibrant downtown Spokane for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Clayton, welcome.
Council President and Council, I'm Clayton McFarland. I'm a property manager and broker with Good Allen Barbiery Company, former president of Boma Spokane and current legislative chair, and currently on the Business Improvement District Board for downtown Spokane, representing large business. About a year ago, I approached Councilmember Bingle and the administration regarding our issues with replacing street trees in the city's right-of-way. As the end-user who pays for the replacement of those trees, the process was a little arduous and fairly expensive for how simple the actual replacement was. So I brought forth some questions, hoping for some resolution, and about a year in the works, we're excited about this pilot program. It hopefully can be codified by an ordinance once we, as a business community and a property owner community, can give you results that this actually works to replace trees, because we certainly agree that it does increase property values and make our city a lot more fun and livable and easier to do business in. So encourage you to vote for this resolution and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
I hit my vote button already on accident. That's not what I was trying to do, but no, I'm really excited about this one. Like Clayton said, you know, he reached out about a year ago, and you know, I think the city and, you know, residents have very similar goals in that, you know, we want Spokane to be more beautiful, you know, livable and enjoyable. And we had a problem downtown where... Or we had many problems leading to one predictable outcome, which was, you know, street trees getting planted weren't lasting all that long. You know, there was issues on whose water is whose. Is this, you know, a public line? Is this a private line? You know, with some of the requirements on the city and when it comes to arborists and inspections and things like that, it just... It made it really expensive, and it made it to where business owners didn't want to keep replacing trees if they were just going to die again because they weren't getting watered or whatever it was. And there was just... There was just a lot that was going on there, and, you know, I think both the parks department, because street trees are within the purview of the parks, parks wanted a resolution to this as well. And I, being on the park board, worked with the park staff and, you know, talked to them about what are the things that we could do to make it work. And I think we reached a really good, you know, proposal here that's going to make it to where not only do downtown business owners now... Will they do it? But I think they're going to be excited to do it because I think that there's a real pathway forward for us to maintain the trees well. We... I am hoping that there is a resolution that... Or not resolution, but an ordinance that comes after this, once we have figured out what we need to do. There's also some work that we need to do on our end as a city because downtown's water infrastructure is unique, I guess is a good word for it, where we're not exactly sure whose water is whose. And the map was drawn, literally for Expo 74. It's still a hand-drawn map that we have, and so we need to update that. And so I'll be making, you know, an ask to the state for some money so we can do a study for our downtown water system to make sure that we all know whose responsibility is whose to make sure that we're keeping those trees healthy and alive. And I don't know if you know this, it's very difficult for a plant to grow, you know, in a very, you know, concrete and hard surface environment. And so I'm... I think, again, we reached a good resolution there. I want to thank Clayton and Chris Hozie and some others who are representing the business community. And I want to thank our city staff because I, again, I think that they did a good job coming to the table with some solutions, some ideas. I think it's going to be really great. And sometimes I think we forget, but downtown is also a neighborhood, and so I think the residents are going to be, you know, recipients of a lot of hard work on behalf or, you know, from the business owners and the city here, and I think that it'll make downtown much more enjoyable to live there for folks who do live there. And so, all that being said, this is the culmination of a lot of work, and I'm excited that we're here. I hope we learn a lot of good things, and the next planting season is soon, and so getting this passed today means that going into the fall planting season, hopefully, we see some real results.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I've brought this up in the past, but I remember a presentation that I watched, I believe it was in 2018. It was before I ran for council, and it was a co-presentation between Larry Stone and the Lands Council. And it was talking about ponderosa trees and planting them and trying to improve some of our public spaces. And one of the comments that Larry made in that presentation that I just... It stuck with me, and I... It really has kind of just been something I've thought a lot about. The idea of the trees and the lushness and the canopy, it really creates a feeling of wealth. Even if there isn't actually a wealthy neighborhood there or a lot of wealth behind it, it does give that feeling, which I think actually creates just a stronger sense of community and enjoyment and everything for everybody who lives, works, and plays in these areas where we are trying to improve the canopy. And we really need to improve the canopy downtown and in northeast where we represent. But that's always stuck with me. I mean, obviously, there's real benefits to a day like today where it's really, really hot, the shade that it creates and the cooling effect, but it also just creates this upper-scale feeling. And the example he used was Mercer Island. You know, when you drive through Mercer Island or by Mercer Island, and you just... You see that lushness. You don't have to know what the average income is. You just... You feel it. And so, the more that we can improve, I think, this, the better it will be for the community. And so, I really thank Councilmember Bingle for pushing hard on this. I know the downtown issue has been a challenge, and hopefully, we will see something really, really positive that comes out of this. So, leave it there.
Councilmember Bingle?
Sorry, there's one more thing I wanted to say about this. So, we, as a Parks Board, we pretty aggressively pursued a federal grant that we received, and it was a $12 million grant that came to the city of Spokane. The city of Spokane received $6 million. The Lands Council received $6 million specifically for the purpose of increasing the tree canopy cover. And so, this is no additional expense to the city of Spokane. This is something where we're just leveraging the program that we did qualify for. And again, this is something that accomplishes all of our goals. And I think Councilmember Cathcart hit the nail on the head, too, is that, you know, this really does make a neighborhood feel more rich. And what we're doing with downtown specifically is, they weren't previously... They couldn't qualify for the residential grants that we had, and so we basically expanded that program to include downtown because it also is a neighborhood. But when you're driving through those neighborhoods, you know, I've born and raised in the north side of... I've always lived in northeast Spokane and, you know, always lived without a lot of trees. You know, the neighborhood that I live in now, you know, has like 13% tree canopy cover, and I think 2% of it is at my house. But we just don't have a ton of trees. And then, you know, you start to drive in different neighborhoods throughout town that do have this really well-developed tree canopy. And like Michael said, or excuse me, like Councilmember Cathcart said, it really does make a neighborhood feel more inviting, feels more wealthy. And I'm hoping that through these programs in the northeast specifically, what happens is it makes our neighborhoods, which are beautiful and vibrant in their own right, feel even more welcoming and vibrant, and people not wanting to move out of the district but remain and make it their home and see it as a place that people can, you know, live and raise a family. And so, I think it's going to pay huge dividends for downtown, but I think it's also going to pay really big dividends for the rest of northeast Spokane as we continue to see it. You know, I... Again, Parks Department, I've seen them planting trees up in our neighborhoods, and I really appreciate it. And again, I hope it makes Spokane, northeast Spokane specifically, feel more like home to a lot of our residents.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? I have to echo that. When Councilmember Klitsky and I were in Kansas City, which is a concrete jungle as well, how they use their trees as part of their adaptive designs for public safety for pedestrians was absolutely amazing. I know this started off as a grant for tree canopy of the areas where there are no trees, Hilliard, East Central, the health benefits. I'm glad that the grant funds are flexible enough to be used for this pilot project going forward, and really, if on a day like today, you could always use another tree. So, prepare to vote.
Ordinance C-36551 amending ordinance C-22045 that vacated C Street from the north line of 16th Avenue to the south line of 14th Avenue and 15th Avenue, from the east line of C Street to the line drawn parallel, 2 and 330 feet east of the east line of C Street in the city and county of Spokane, Washington, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance.
There is no public comment. Does council need any additional information since Mr. Brown's in the room with us? Seeing none, prepare to vote. You got distracted? Okay, I'm going to clear the board. Prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 6-0.
Ordinance C-36726, repeating... Repealing duplicate code sections in the Spokane Municipal Code, Chapter 12.02, repealing sections 12.02.1004 and 12.02.1008 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
There is no public testimony. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. 6-0.
Ordinance C-36720 will be considered under hearing item H1. Ordinance 36721, relating to alcohol advertising regulations established by the Washington State Liquor Control Board and adopting a new chapter 10.63 to the Spokane Municipal Code.
We have one public comment. Derek Banditos, come on down.
We have one public comment. Derek Bajos, come on down. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Wilkerson and councilmembers. Again, Derek Bajos with the Washington Hospitality Association. I'm here tonight to express our support for ordinance C 36721. I've heard from many of our members who are concerned about this issue, and I want to thank councilmember Dylan for responding quickly and bringing this forward. Our industry has faced a tough road since 2020, and every issue we can proactively address makes a difference. So again, thank you, councilmember Dylan and President Wilkerson for bringing this forward. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just be brief. So this was an ordinance in response to some constituent concerns, as Derek mentioned. You know, we heard about the Washington State Liquor Control Board beginning to enforce a Washington administrative code that limited the number of advertising signs, particularly neon signs, that you could have outside business that had a liquor license. So a couple restaurants approached us. The Spokane Valley approved an ordinance back in, City Spokane Valley approved an ordinance back in March that did create an exemption for this code. And this was really good collaboration between the city and the valley, working with them on how they crafted language that exempted these businesses. And so I really want to thank Chris Wright and Legislative aide Ginny Ramos for working with our legal team and the Spokane Valley City Attorney so we could follow suit and not have a gap in our laws. This is just a small step to supporting, supporting small businesses in Spokane and look forward to its implementation.
Great. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That's 6-0.
Ordinance C 36723, we'll pass that. Ordinance C 36643, vacating Grace Avenue west of Northwest Boulevard as requested by Excelsior Wellness.
There is no public comment on that. Any council commentary? Mr. Brown's in the room. Any additional information? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. 6-0.
Ordinance C 36716, expanding the duties of the Spokane Human Rights Commission to include automatic review of proposed changes to Title 18 of the Spokane Municipal Code and related provisions.
We have one public comment. Megra Flatman, online. Megra, are you there?
Megra, go ahead and plus, press star three to unmute. I'm sorry, star six, star six.
Hello?
Hi, Megra. We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So there's some really good info in the summary of this one. The city established the Spokane Human Rights Commission in 1992 with the stated purpose of advising and making recommendations to the Spokane City Council regarding human rights and discrimination. Spokane City Council has not followed these recommendations that Spokane Human Rights Commission has provided. We still don't have a Spokane Homeless Bill of Rights. We are still discriminating against people of color with our racist police policies, our lethal police policies. And this ordinance expands the duties of the Spokane Human Rights Commission, but it doesn't require city council to pay attention or to listen to them or to follow their advice. And that's the disconnect. That's the whole problem, is we don't listen to when the Spokane Human Rights Commissioner, we just heard Ann Larpis earlier today about how discriminatory our police state is, but we're not doing anything about it. What is city council doing to fix that? Our current Spokane Human Rights Commissioner, Justice for All, has been speaking out against discrimination and about the abduction of our community members by masked men. And we know these people aren't being given due process. We know that they're not being treated fairly. We know that they're in inhuman conditions. We know they're not being fed. But we're not listening to the Spokane Human Rights Commission when they speak out against these atrocities. This ordinance, as near as I can tell, is just adding extra work without any of the accountability that city council needs to provide. This is the same thing that happened with the OCRBI. We said that our office needs to
And thank you, Megra.
Provide input. Thank you.
Thank you. It was. It was. Counsel commentary? Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah. So this one came about, you know, we had an ordinance pertaining to homelessness that actually made some changes to the Human Rights Commission. And one of the reasons why I, I tasked our team with writing this ordinance and bringing it forward was because the Human Rights Commission serves as an advisory body. And if we're going to be making an ordinance that removes their duties or adds to their duties, I think that the Human Rights Commission should weigh in on that and give us their opinion on that. And part of that was going to be removed from them. And so the idea is, is that if that body's going to be affected, even if they're an advisory body, then they, I think that they should be able to give their opinion. Now, one of the things that I heard there is that we, we cannot require the city council to, to follow their recommendations. That is not an elected body. We are the elected body here to represent the people. And so we take the advice of many different groups in the city, many different boards and commissions. And we implement that, you know, what, what we believe to be right based on all the, all the data that comes in. Justice for All is a completely different story that we could spend a lot of time on. But, but the Human Rights Commission in general, if they're, if they're going to exist, and they should, if they're going to exist, then they should be able to weigh in on things that are affecting them. And so that's why I brought this forward. I want to thank Council President Wilkerson for being with me on this one. This was one that former councilwoman Navarrete and I were going to be bringing forward, but it got deferred until she was no longer in this position. So thank you, Council President Wilkerson, for, for joining.
Thank you. Any other council commentary?
I will say, when this first came about, my concern was there has not been consistent staffing for this committee. That has been a challenge. It's been staffed by LAs. It's been sometimes staffed by the administration. So I'm hoping this will give them dedicated staffing. That was a challenge to get things across the finish line. Also, the partnership following under the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion is another piece that should leverage their voice. And also, as we look for councilmembers to be liaisons to these various boards and commissions, to really have them elevate their voice, if they're going to be on that, whatever board or commission is, to come back and say, this is what the people are saying. This is what they want. So I think it's a three-pronged approach now to give more weight to the voice that's out there, and not only for this committee, but for the many others that serve volunteers in the city of Spokane. So thank you. That being said, prepare to vote.
Thank you. That passed 6-0.
Council President, can we go back to ordinance C 36643? There is a notation for requesting a motion to suspend the council rules to consider the following proposed amendment.
I thought we had dealt with that, Mr. Wright. Did we not?
We did.
The Grace Avenue one?
Yeah, that, that was.
Right, that is the Grace Avenue one.
That was accepted at 3:30. Oh, perfect. Okay. My apologies. Thank you. Ordinance 36722, relating to impressed funds, amending sections 07.03.020, 040, repealing sections 07.03.050, 060, 070, 075, 090, 122, 123, 150, 151, 152, 153, 154, 155, 162, 170, 171, 190, 200, and 230 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Thank you. There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 6-0.
Special considerations, S1, letter to Spokane County requesting city participation in the selection of Executive Director of Spokane County Regional Animal Protection Service.
Thank you. Want to speak to councilmember Kekhart?
Yeah, is anybody signed up?
There's no public comment.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you very much. And, and thank you to the council for putting this on our agenda for tonight at last week's meeting. There's a long history, obviously, that relates to, to scraps and, and the, the goings on with that agency, obviously back to its origination more than, well more than 10 years ago. But predominantly, a lot of the most challenging kind of issues have arisen since 2020, 2022, more or less. In February of 2020, I was really grateful that the council saw fit at that time to support an amendment that I put forward that would require that when euthanasia takes place, that it's based on an irremediable prognosis, be it behavioral or physical. And when new leadership came in, that, that provision was not followed the way it was with the previous leadership at scraps. And that ultimately led to, through a, a number of very challenging situations, the passage of an ordinance by this council that specifically prohibited the use of euthanasia for space, which is the perception of what, what was happening at the time. One of the, now, that, that, again, has not necessarily been, been followed. But one of the really good, positive things that came out of that was the reconstitution of the advisory board. And so I think that that has been important. I'd like to see that elevated. But a lot of the things that we want to see, a lot of the things that our community members want to see, our constituents, the things we see on a regular basis, I, I see in here on a regular basis at least, to accomplish those things is going to require, I think, the right leader in that position. The city has been investigating the idea or the possibility of standing up our own animal control that would follow the, the principles that we put forward to protect our, our domestic pets. But this creates, I think, a renewed opportunity to strengthen the partnership around scraps, potentially see that, see it continue in a positive way that can regain public trust and, you know, really just be a, a stronger agency in the community that, that people can trust in. So I, I think if we can participate in the hiring process and, you know, help identify, you know, the right types of leaders or leader for that agency going forward, that's going to make a huge difference. And I know there's a lot of folks in our community who really want to see scraps acting in the most ethical way possible. And I think that there's an opportunity for us to, all of us, the county, the city, scraps, our constituents, everybody to see a win-win-win if we're allowed to be at the table. And so, very respectfully requesting the county put us at the table and allow us to have a role in the hiring process.
Any other council commentary? Seeing none, let's prepare to vote. That passes 6-0. Thank you, Councilwoman Kekhart, for that.
Hearings H1, first reading ordinance C 36720, updating the city of Spokane's complete streets program, amending sections 04.40.080, 17H.020.010, .030, .040, and 060. Adopting new sections 17H.020.015, 055, 070, and 080, and repealing sections 17H.020.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Thank you. This is a time and place set for the public hearing on the following materials, which is updating the city of Spokane's complete streets program. Is there any staff report? Seeing no staff report, is there any public comment? We have several. Eric Low, Dennis Flynn, and then Alex Hamasaki. Hope I got that right.
Good evening. I want to express my strong support for the proposed complete streets ordinance as amended. The city of Spokane has done incredible policy work over the last two years when it comes to making our streets safer for all road users. But we activists have been frustrated with the pace and scope of implementation. This ordinance should help significantly on both, both fronts. By utilizing best practices as determined by the National Association of City Transportation Officials and American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, Spokane will ensure high-quality and safe transportation facilities for all users. Despite current thinking in some traffic engineering circles, including at Spokane's Public Works Department, level of service should not be the sole or even primary metric upon which projects are graded. If people cannot expect a minimum level of safety in their transportation system, it doesn't matter how many vehicles can theoretically traverse it. I am excited to see what the city can accomplish with traffic engineers trained and incentivized to prioritize safety over vehicle throughput. And to see adaptive traffic controls implemented at a pace faster than seven projects per year because those engineers stop working as impediments to safety and instead become partners in safety. It is, additionally, it is critical that street maintenance and construction allow for continued access to pedestrian transit and bicycle facilities. Lastly, I'm ecstatic to see performance measures that include measurements of annual fatalities and serious injuries for all modes of travel, vehicle miles traveled within the city of Spokane, transit boardings, micro mobility trips, and new transit and active transportation facilities constructed. Thank you for your work on this ordinance. After it passes tonight, I hope you join me in holding the administration to its stated expectations and standards. As we have seen with the Janet Mann Safe Streets Now Resolution, policy without adequate implementation is just words on paper. Thank you.
Next is Dennis Flynn.
Dennis, go ahead and press star three. Star six to unmute. Go ahead, Dennis.
Hi, this is Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. I agree with the intention just expressed about words. Words are intended to have meaning, have meaning. The phrase, quote, "safe streets for all," end quote, and, quote, "complete streets," end quote, are intended to convey specific meanings. So in the context of meaningful words, I do have one recommendation for your consideration tonight. In 17H.020.15, I recommend you submit a motion to change the word "road" and "roads" to "roadway" or "travelway" and "roadways" or "travelways." And then substitute the last word "roadways" with "roadways" or "travelways." I suggest this because you will soon have FMC Wording Definition proposed changes coming that utilizes these terms. So best to get ahead on the consistency now. Other important words in here specify considerations meant to provide a safety, quote, "provide complete and connected facilities for all options," and, quote, "providing and maintaining a safe transportation system, particularly the most vulnerable users," and, quote, "encourage open, accessible, internal, multimodal transportation connections to adjacent properties on streets on all sides," and finally, quote, "prioritize the safety of people walking." There are many more references to ensuring safety for all of us, residents and visitors. And what was really important to me is what councilmember Bingo was just talking about is keeping exceptions and deviations to be approved by the city council, which are kept in this proposed code changes. And I bring this up to you because you will soon have suggested changes to definitions of of roadways, travelways, driveways, alleys, which include removing from this council any authority to approve exceptions, putting it directly in the pocket of the administrator or engineer to approve or deny it to her she sees fit. Are you willing to sacrifice the proclamations of concern for multimodal safety identified in this Complete Streets ordinance update by willingly giving up your right, just, and proper authority to the administrator or engineer? Once the legislative branch gives up its power to the executive, well, let's just say keeping it in the first place is easier than trying to claw it back after giving it up. And while we're talking about safety, do you consider it safe to require elderly, children, and disabled to have to traverse a shared driveway that has no separation from pedestrians? When does a good intention on one hand and a demonstrable bad result on the other hand identify a situation that deserves the attention of the legislative body that is way more in tune with the will of the people than any bureaucrat could possibly be? Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Alex Hamasaki? Are you online?
Alex, go ahead and press star 6 to unmute. Go ahead. Go ahead, Alex.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead. We can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead. Are you here for your testimony on the Complete Streets ordinance? Alex, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hello, Alex, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I think I have poor connection. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes. Go ahead. Sorry, Alex, we're not able to hear you.
I will email in my testimony then, since I'm having really poor reception. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Super sorry with your technology issues. Our, I will now take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any council commentary or debate? In that case, I'm sorry, someone raised their hand?
I was gonna, on the hearing?
On the hearing. No, not on the hearing.
We're closing the hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by direct vote, a voice vote, or? Let's do. Say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? The ayes have it that pass 6-0. The hearing is closed. I'll request a motion to adopt the ordinance resolution as presented, the ordinance as presented. So moved. Been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance as presented. All those in favor, please indicate.
That's gotta be a roll call vote.
Oh, that's gotta be a roll call vote. Prepare to vote. Oh, Councilwoman McCartney, sorry.
Yeah, just very briefly, I'll be supporting this tonight, but I am going to be keeping just a close eye on things because I do have, not related to this ordinance, but do have broad, somewhat grave concerns just regarding prioritization and our role in the process with regards to the Transportation Commission. I want to make sure that we are being very, very responsive to our constituents, and so I just have a number of concerns related to that, but we'll be supporting this ordinance tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Klitschke.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone who worked so hard on this, Councilmember Dylan, John Snyder, our Transportation Director. I think this is an overdue update and really excited to give the Complete Streets ordinance a little more teeth in response to some of the concerns about terminology and our giving administrative authority to our Planning Department. Some of those issues are going to be addressed when we do our major comprehensive plan update, and there's always a code cleanup and development regulation cleanup in that process, so that will be happening. As far as the concerns about alleyways and driveways, I think we've made some changes just in, just today to update some of those concerns, but already in shared driveways and alleyway situations, there is pedestrian path required, and those will be limited to nine units, so we have made some changes to address that. I think that there was a disconnect because there was some concern about a development in my district that was under the old Boca Code, and now we have newer situations. So a lot of those concerns have been addressed, but thank you for your testimony, and we will be watching those performance measures that were mentioned in Mr. Lowe's testimony.
Thank you. Councilmember Dylan.
Yeah, I really want to thank Councilmember Klitschke and John Snyder. It's very funny to date ourselves a little bit. 15 years ago, we were in the same conference room up at City Hall working on this ordinance. Now we're all wearing different hats and a little bit grayer. But part of the timing of this ordinance really is due to grant eligibility for why we wanted to get this done at the end of this month. We've seen a lot of success with more grant eligibility from Safe Routes to schools, our Washington State Bike Ped program, and so I'm really looking forward to getting this passed and seeing the implementation. This is definitely a work in progress. You know, since this passed in 2011, a lot of our guidelines and standards have changed, and for the City of Spokane to really be at the forefront, we have to be nimble. Otherwise, we're going to get left behind with a lot of these funding opportunities. We all want safer streets in the City of Spokane, and I really do believe that this ordinance is going to help us get there.
Councilmember Zappone?
Yeah, I'm also really excited to be supporting this and thank everyone for working on this, and want to thank some feedback that we got a couple of weeks ago that we were able to incorporate some changes such as during construction. So thank you for that feedback, and absolutely echo the same sentiment of safer streets. And I think since this was implemented years ago, it's led to some changes that's led to safer streets. But I also echo some of the concerns about implementation. That previous ordinance stated that there would be an annual review and metrics agreed upon by council and the administration that would be reported annually, and we discovered that had not been followed since our time on council, my time on council, until this last year. So it's important for council, future council members, and community members to make sure that we're following this and tracking it and making sure it's implemented accurately.
Thank you. Seeing other commentary, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 6-0. That concludes our hearing. We are now going to go into open forum. Remember, open forum is for two minutes only. Please direct all your comments at the chair and be respectful. We're going to start with Jenny Hansen, Sunshine Wigan, and Will Hewlings.
Jenny, go ahead and press star 3 to raise your hand. Now press star 6 to unmute. Go ahead, you're unmuted. Go ahead and press star 6 one more time.
Okay. Jenny, we will come back to you. Hopefully have our technology figured out. Sunshine? Did we hear you, Jenny? No. Go ahead, Sunshine.
Sunshine Wigan, I live in my car. I don't know really where I belong. This kit cost me $3 to make right here. This is my suicide prevention kits I hand out that include water to refocus and bring down the racing heartbeat and bring breathing back to a normal pace without thinking about it, fast physical intervention. People in addiction, crisis, or homelessness tend to suppress emotions as if a negative in their lives. I use paint and a brush with a small canvas to embrace that all emotions are okay to express and that emotions are okay, period. This work, this is working really well with my fentanyl people, believe it or not, that I hang out with. Some of them have actually used the art to get sober while they detox and things. I just, I love to embrace art. That's what my teacher taught me to do for all my mental illness and things that I have to triumph. Thank you, you guys.
And Sunshine, thank you.
You're welcome, you guys.
Next is Will Hewlings. We're having clock technicalities, so Councilmember Dylan is now our clock. Go ahead and start. Will, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown Spokane. So I've lived downtown Spokane for several years now. I've witnessed a lot of change. Last week, or the last time I was here, I commended the downtown Spokane Police Precinct for having officers on foot, but from what I've heard from people I know that live in my building, they said they haven't been seeing them lately. And so it's kind of a letdown because it seemed like it was actually working, you know, having cops walking around on a shift, you know, walking around instead of driving around in their vehicles. But I understand that staffing, you know, is obviously a big problem, but it would be nice if maybe the precinct captain downtown could change that. I mean, downtown, if you're paying attention, I don't really watch the news. Spokane news is what I get my news from, on Facebook, and it's kind of disturbing, a lot of the stuff you see, especially downtown. And one thing that I find really disturbing is there was just two drug overdoses right at 500 West Sprague, and so that's a grocery store, and right next to it, they just opened a liquor store. And I was sitting out there yesterday watching, or the other night, and I was, I seen people out in front of this liquor store doing their fentanyl, doing their drugs. Then on the corner was a grocery store, so something needs to be done about these stores, you know? But anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Jim Lee, Derek Azaro, and then Diane Sutton. I don't see Jim currently. Come on down, Derek. I don't see Jim in the building. And after Jim, Diane Sutton.
Derek Azaro, supporting Kansas Spokane. I had to clarify, said earlier about Klitschke and Dylan being on nonprofit, I meant I was referring to their previous employment. And when I mentioned, talked about money for cops, may not have been to the exact, to that particular item, but I don't appreciate it being called. It's a Santa's wish list, kind of sarcastic, narcissistic statement. I came down here to basically give opposition to the behavior of the council in the July 16th meeting, now finding out after I was one of those that stayed here until 1:00 in the morning and fought that down. To find out that you got a councilmember, Zappone, running for office is getting private texting from the mayor during that meeting, unaware to any of us, the texting going back and forth between members, between the mayor, obviously opposed to Never-Ate's no vote, and calling for recess and going in the back, coming back, none of us out here in the audience were privy to any of that going on. The mayor wants to talk, she can come down here herself instead of hiding and texting councilmembers during the meeting. It's not really fair to any other councilmembers that may be on this dais. They don't get private texts from the mayor during meetings, basically puppeteering or using a mole to get their, her personal agenda taken care of. She also, I oppose the fact that the Assistant City Attorney calling up the Ethics Committee and contacting them, the Ethics Committee is appointed by the mayor, so that's challenging. No, you know, all of us come down here, most of us come down here basically at our own expense and our, in our own dime and our own time, staying here until 1:00 in the morning, fighting with councilmembers that are doing definitely unethical behavior. It's been going on for quite a while. So I just have strong opposition to all of this. We come down here with honest intentions to discuss matters on the agenda and to have the mayor going back and forth privately with councilmembers during the meeting.
Thank you. Diane?
Definitely not okay. Thank you.
Diane, and then Megra?
Blackstone's commentaries say that man-made law is like scientific law. It must be discovered. As Blackstone guided, let's develop muscle memory on the successes of halting deaths elsewhere to see what can be discovered here. The President's executive order ending crime and disorder on American streets, signed just last Thursday, shifted the federal approach to homelessness away from the housing-first model toward substance abuse treatment and enforcement. It prioritizes programs that require sobriety and mental health or substance abuse treatment as conditions for participation while also encouraging enforcement of laws against urban camping, loitering, and public drug use. It's a sharp blow to Washington State Municipalities' housing-first strategies with potential loss of federal funding if you do not adhere to the new requirements. To quote another work of enduring influence like Blackstone's, "Who are you going to call? How are you going to get around this one? You're going the wrong way." I heard Spokane County Sheriff John Knowles in this room state that he would have put his daughter in jail if it had been needed to save her life. Of course, I agree concerning my grandson, who is forever 22 years old. You will not want to be remembered as the Spokane City Death Council.
Thank you. Megra, and after Megra, Eugene Knowles and Cody Zalinski.
Megra, press star 3, please. Raise your hand.
We will come back. Eugene, come on down.
Okay, Eugene Knowles, I've been living here in Spokane since 2010. So last week, I mentioned I went to Matty's place, and the reason I brought that up, I was, when I went out there, I was shocked. I said, wow, this is how they should do it. Now, one person, I spoke in the past, I told her that was a five, or they asked me what was a five like. Matty's place, that's a five. Now, what they're putting in now, these shelters where they come scattered site, I haven't seen them. Last week, I mentioned UGM, that's a five. I mentioned the shelter on South Cali, St. Margaret's, that's a five. You look at the location, you look at the building, Truth Services or whatever it is out of hand Sprague, that's a five. It fits right into the architecture of the street and the place. When you go by, you don't even know it's a shelter. It looks like it belongs there. These number sixes, which is down a notch, they don't have the services, they'll say they do. They don't have the management, they'll say they do. They don't have sustainable financing, they'll say they do. You gotta, but fives, you have to plan ahead. And the final thing I'll say here is where the big failure is, is when you drop down to number eight. People roaming the streets with these shopping carts and dirty blankets, that's an eight. They're on their way down to the calamity, death, number nine. So I'll leave it there. I'll be back in a couple of weeks and talk some more about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Remember, we'll be on summer recess for a couple of weeks. Cody?
Leave Cody's online. Cody, if you're online, please press star 3 to raise your hand. Go ahead and press star 3, Cody. Now press star 6 to unmute. Now press star six to unmute.
Okay, can hear you now.
Can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, excellent. Hello, City Council. My name is Cody Klitschke, speaking as co-director of Psychedelic Medicine Alliance of Washington alongside Enlightened Spokane and local religious groups utilizing natural psychedelic medicine as religious sacraments. We hope Spokane will be another major city in Washington State in decriminalizing not commercially used natural psychedelic medicine, such as psilocyde, mushrooms, and other indigenous medicines. There is growing bipartisan consensus that there are no valid reasons for municipal governments in Washington State to prosecute individuals for using these medicines for personal healing and broom. The scientific literature is in agreement with thousands of papers detailing the low-risk profile and healing for disorders such as traumatic brain injury, opioid use disorder, and PTSD, of which there are otherwise known or limited current pharmacological treatments. The vast majority of legal risk for individuals using these medicines comes at the local level, and I urge the city to take the minor step of adopting a decriminalization ordinance and give peace of mind to those otherwise committing a victimless crime. Thank you, and I say my die.
Thank you. Next, we have Sandy Nichols. Sandy?
Me?
Yeah. Well, only if it's you.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Nichols. West Hills right now is undergoing an avalanche of future homeless shelters that Catholic Charities and Empire Health want to put in our neighborhood. It's like the city has put a target on our back in West Hills, and we are going to be the dumping ground for the homeless that you have had so many problems with downtown. Catholic Charities wants to triple the population at Catalyst with a new 120-unit building and an area for 50 tiny homes. Pioneer Health wants to build a 120-unit apartment right across the street from Ascenda for mentally ill. And now Empire Health wants to put what they call a pilot project with 30 tiny homes right next to Ascenda. What is going on? That's an increase of over 300 homeless and mentally ill, all in close proximity to Ascenda, the best private alcohol and drug treatment community in Spokane. Despite a flawless 20-year run, here comes Empire Health with plans to bury Lisa with a new tiny home project. They've also made it clear that the decisions they make to put it there is not appealable, which means they're going to put it there whether West Hills, Lisa, or anybody else wants it or not. The input they ask for is nothing but a snow job. The truth is, we're getting 30 more low-barrier homeless in a facility that has no drug testing, no curfew, no 24-hour supervision. It's basically a camp hope made out of wood. And what kind of effect do you think that's going to have on 40 people with fragile sobriety trying hard to stay sober, but then get flooded with residents from Empire Health who don't even require them to be sober or clean? The best thing that can happen to West Hills and Ascenda, as if they haven't done already, is for the city and the city council here to do whatever they can to defund anything that Empire Health right now wants to put in that property. Empire Health can put all the lipstick they want on that pig, but it doesn't belong there, and it's ludicrous to even consider putting it next to Ascenda.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ginny. If you're still on, Ginny, one more time, see if we can get your comments.
Okay, Ginny, go ahead and press star three to raise your hand. Okay, now press star six to unmute yourself. Okay, Ginny, you're good to go.
Hopefully I'm coming through?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Oh, sorry. Good evening, council members. I am piggybacking on last week's testimony by Jessa Lewis. I am part of the Enlightened Spokane Movement, asking the Spokane City Council to make the investigation, arrest, and prosecution of anyone engaging in entheogen-related activities to be among the city's lowest law enforcement priorities. Entheogens are psychoactive plants and fungi that, when used responsibly and with intent, can eradicate a myriad of mental health conditions. Indigenous human cultures worldwide have utilized entheogens in traditional healing and spiritual development. Entheogens can transform human lives for the better. Clinical and anecdotal evidence point to several key benefits of plant medicines. Number one, addiction treatment. Ibogaine, for example, interrupts withdrawal symptoms, especially from opioids, and dramatically reduces cravings for substances like heroin, methadone, alcohol, cocaine, and nicotine and others. Number two, neuroplasticity and brain connectivity. Brain scans show the benefit of entheogen use. Number three, reduced depression and anxiety. Certain entheogens have shown rapid and lasting antidepressant effects, particularly in terminally ill patients. Clinical trial participants say it's like years of therapy in one session. Number four, PTSD and trauma processing. In my work with, excuse me, military veterans, I have witnessed their complete transformation and after an entheogenic experience. These veterans went from non-functional humans to thriving members of society. And number five, increased mindfulness and life satisfaction. Use of entheogens can lead to increased gratitude, more compassion, a greater sense of purpose and meaning, and inner peace. And couldn't we all use more peace? Please consider passing our resolution, which I have already emailed to all the council members. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Ginny. Glad we were able to get you connected. That concludes our legislative agenda for tonight. Please be mindful that we are not in session on the 4th or August 11th. Our next regular meeting will be August 18th. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you all.